I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have approval of tonight's agenda.
All right, Mr. President, I move that the board approved the October ninth, twenty twenty-three agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Next we'll have the report of the board members.
Uh, I can start. Welcome, everybody. Um, I was able to attend the Blue Ridge seventy-fifth year anniversary. I loved it. I absolutely loved it because I had people my age and older who went to school there. And so I really thought it was wonderful. And I also had an opportunity to go to Hall of Fame luncheon and congratulate, have lunch with all of those who have been honored for being successful Raytown students at one time or another, uh, Raytown citizens. Uh, I had the opportunity to go back to my alma mater, uh, Niles Home for Children and be trained in some, uh, mental health training for young people. I get a lot of mental health training for adults, and this was specifically for young people. I had a training opportunity, couple of training opportunities to train at one of our local, uh, Raytown community service programs, Sisters in Christ, was able to train them in, um, crisis management, uh, able to train, uh, at Job Corps. I was able to train their teachers and some of their parents in crisis management and got a chance to meet with the Raytown Striving Hub this month. That's a group of, uh, Raytown organizations working together for the betterment of our Raytown citizens and our young people. That's what I've been doing.
Thank you very much. We're happy that you are.
All right, um, Mr. President, um, I was able to meet a few weeks back. Uh, uh, they were so gracious with the Ray team and it was just as they were closing up, but I was able to meet with them just to kind of talk about uh, some of those concerns and they talked about doing a quality of work-life survey, um, just to get some more feedback. I got really short down here. Just realized that. I gotta do this. Um, and then, uh, it was really a spectacular event to attend the Kansas City Symphony. Uh, there is a music concert, um, in support of our students and our choir. So it was a spectacular event and just on my own, um, just being able to link with some not-for-profit organizations, uh, for about client collective projects, um, doing some seminars on mental health, um, agilities training, and then equity workshops.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I was absolutely blown away. I got to go to Battle of the Brains, see my man and a bunch of others participate with, uh, Dr. Penelope Martin Knox. Um, I was able to get finished with my board member training. My God. Everybody should be privy to do that. Uh, I was able to attend a, a few different chamber of commerce events. And, uh, I was also able to go over to the Sisters in Christ meeting and be a part of that. It was a tremendous thing. I was also able to go over to the luncheon at the Hall of Fame, uh, luncheon event and also be a part of their Hall of Fame, uh, event as well. Um, and I was also able to go to a men's health month. It was men's health, uh, month in September. I was able to attend that. And also I was able to go to, uh, Ray South and be part of the college and career guest speaking with the, uh, twelfth graders. And it was a tremendous, a tremendous event as well. So that was part of the things I got to do over the last course of this. But thank you.
So we had STEM in the gym, uh, last week, so that was a great event. I'm glad we're still doing that and looks like we had a lot of, uh, vendors, people putting on this, uh, demonstrations and hopefully a lot of kids were able to attend that and get some good experience. So the Blue Ridge celebrations, their seventy-fifth anniversary was great. A great job by the teachers and everybody who put that event on because it was a great turnout. And I will point out the, the choir, they just did a fantastic job. Uh, I've seen several songs and just, uh, entertaining the crowd, but they do great. And just put a quick plug in, I see Martha here with the, a ref, Ray Town Run for Excellence is coming up in a couple of weeks, so there's plenty of time still to sign up for that. So it's a big fundraiser. We'd like to see five hundred people running that day, right? Right, Martha?
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Mr. President, um, missed last month, but I got an opportunity to go over to Ray Town South High School. So I want to shout out Principal uh, Hammond and, and, um, his staff and they had, um, Johnny Rollins and Channel Nine fly in as the band, uh, kind of saluted the teachers and the appreciation. So I had an opportunity to do that as well as me with, uh, with Martha and, and ref to talk about opportunities for wraparound services for our students in the district along with Dr. Chris Greiner. Uh, so excited to continue the talks, uh, with her and with the fellow board members of concerning our wraparound service, opportunities for the district and our students.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Also, I, I forgot to acknowledge that I did go to STEM in the gym and I wanted to most definitely give them a shout out for putting on a tremendous event. It was spectacular. So I don't want to, I'd be remiss not to mention that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I just want to acknowledge you all for the that your activity that you have in, in, uh, in our, in our school district every month. Uh, we're mostly a brand new board and, uh, really out there, uh, participating with our community and, uh, being involved and, uh, and, and really ensuring that we move in the right direction and make the improvements that and I, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and, uh, I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have, uh, reports from each elementary building submitted by, uh, the building principal. So, uh, yes. I skipped that part. The building principals won't be presenting, the superintendent will be.
I was looking at seeing where change.
So, good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. Um, Mr. Burton and many members of the board have already spoken about the great things that have been occurring around Raytown. And I just want to say thank you to our board members for attending as much as you possibly can. But like, I would like to give a big shout out to our students who have participated, whether it's the robotics program, whether it was STEM in the gym, whether it was the seventy-fifth anniversary, there are just so many things that our children are doing to demonstrate their knowledge that they learn each and every day. That knowledge wouldn't be possible if it were not for our teachers. But it also is important to recognize our principals for this month because as we know, October is a busy month with things that we celebrate around our nation. And later on, we'll be celebrating and recognizing our principals, but if you have not done so, the hashtag from the AASA and from the National Association of Secondary Principals and the National Association of Elementary School Principals or just make sure you say thank you to a principal because their work is never done. And so that many of them are here and I just want to publicly say thank you for all that you do each and every day. While we are recognizing, I just want to also recognize the executive leadership because many of you may or may not know, but today was Shadow a Student Day. And so from the superintendent to all of the executive leaders, we spent the day in our selected or respective schools to walk a mile in the shoes of a student. And so if you've not recognized what it's like to be out of school, uh, for a long time and some of us are very, very, very long time, it is an experience that like no other. So thank you to the executive team for coming back and sharing some of the stories. And many may think like, why would you do that? It is just to see the lens of what happens on a day-to-day basis from the eyes of a child. Our work is about children and if you do not understand what they experience each and every day, the work that we do is for not. They are our primary customer. And so I just want to tell our children, especially those at South High, that I shadowed today. Thank you for allowing me to come into the classroom. And a very funny story, the student that I shadowed today, when I came into the classroom, they all thought she had done something wrong, really, really wrong because the superintendent was walking with her. So there was nothing she did wrong for those rumors that may get out there. We were just doing Shadow a Student Day. And I want you to mark a couple of dates down on your calendar because as a community, we're asking you to continue to support the efforts of our school district as we continue to move forward. The first is RQS Day. That will be on October the twelfth. Again, October the twelfth, we are asking all of our business partners, our parents, our students, our teachers, our staff to wear red and or blue on those days, uh, as we recognize us for the school district that we are. The next date would be October the thirteenth, where the board tonight and I are wearing pink to show our awareness and support for those who are challenged with breast cancer and making sure that we are aware of the impact it has on our family members and our loved ones. So we are tonight wearing pink, but on October the thirteenth, we're asking all of our community and our schools to celebrate by wearing pink. And then on October the eighteenth, it's Unity Day. It's to demonstrate your kindness and support for one another and just making sure we understand uh, each other and we extend grace because while we're not perfect, we continue to work and do our very best each and every day. And that's on October the eighteenth and you are encouraged to wear orange. We will continue to have moments like this where we come together as a community because we know as a school district and I know firsthand as the superintendent, this work is not something that can be tackled single-handedly. And so while we are moving through the month of October, a lot to recognize, but this month is also Special Education, um, and Disability Awareness Month. So let's make sure we recognize those, uh, differences, but yet we are so close and so much alike. As we continue to move through the report of the superintendent, I will move down through eight point one, point two, point three, point four, and go to eight point five and ask Mr. Josh Huestead to come forward, um, to share some information with us as we look at our bond updates and the auxiliary gym and the work that's occurring. Mr. Huestead.
Good evening, members of the board, President Burton, Dr. Martin Knox, excuse me. Um, as you know, both projects are, uh, full speed at Raytown High and South High. Uh, we're underway at both locations, uh, with new builds. Unfortunately, we'll, we'll hit some snags, uh, right now. We've uncovered three different foundations, uh, where we're building Raytown High School at. Uh, there were three businesses, houses. Uh, I'm not sure what they were. When I looked them up on Google Earth, you just see structures, um, that were there. Um, we've had to remove those. Through removing those, there's an associated cost. Uh, we're about halfway done with that right now. Uh, we'll move forward with the other half. If you've been over there, you'll see we have it, uh, half of it we're working on. Once we get that in the gravel parking lot, we'll move to the, the half closest to Raytown Road. Um, once we do that, we'll have a solidified cost. Uh, we had a, a unit index price in there which said for each cubic yard of material brought out, this is what we pay. For each cubic, uh, yard of material brought in, this is what we pay. So we've been closely monitoring that to see, uh, where we land on that. But I just want to make you guys aware that that is going on right now. Uh, based off estimates of cubic yards of, of, and if we don't find anything else, uh, we're expecting that cost to be between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. See if they have any questions. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huestead. And now of the final item under the superintendent's report, we would hear from our amazing, if you haven't heard or don't know, now you know, our amazing student representatives from Raytown South High School and Raytown High School, if you all are present, if you would come to the front.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. President and Dr. Martin Knox. Here, I'm Eliza Soria, President of Raytown High School, and this is our student report. Currently, our soccer team is one and nine, so they've lost only one game and won nine and they currently won. And then I think last week, they won their tournament at Oak Park at first place. Our girls golf ended their season by going to Jefferson City for districts. And then our homecoming, that was Barbie themed, had over four hundred students attending. And then finally, our band went to their first festival and received numerous Class A plaques. Thank you. Are there any questions?
What, what did you receive?
What?
You said the band received.
Like numerous Class A plaques. So, yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Can I ask a question? Uh, on the Barbie theme, so the girls were Barbie and the guys were Kim?
A lot of them actually dressed up in pink too.
Oh, they, alright.
It was like everyone was in a lot of pink. No kings. Yeah.
So I had a question for you. You guys had a Dr. McCarthy day, right?
Yes, our principal.
Yes. This is, this is his first year, right?
Mm-hmm.
That says a lot for a principal.
I think he's doing phenomenal job. I, everybody in our student really likes him and he's participated in so many of our, like, just events and just something that we appreciate for a principal to see like students as me, to see my principal out and going through and participating and supporting us, honestly. So I really appreciate that.
Mr. President.
I have a question for you. So do you think his style will do you think the blazer and the shorts will catch on?
That was my next question.
Honestly, it threw us off a bit.
Okay. Okay, that was my next question.
But it's, it's a fashion statement. It's like, like, like who wears shorts and blazers? Dr. McCarthy.
McCarthy.
Dr. McCarthy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Kara Shelley and I'm Vice President of Raytown South High School Student Council. Um, I'm here to just give you a little report. Um, we're coming off of Homecoming Week. We had a great turnout for Spirit Week. Many different interpretations of the crazy days that we had. Um, and then going into, um, the dance, we had almost four hundred tickets sold, which is a lot for us. And then new DJ, new a lot of stuff, so it went well for us. Um, and then our social media presence has also been very large lately, um, along with Cardinal Cast and Student Council. We have immense, like, almost like two hundred followers just at the beginning of the semester. So that's kind of crazy. Um, and then we have set out many game themes for all the football games. Our next one is the October twentieth is our Halloween game theme. So if you guys want to come dressed up as like, I don't know, what's a Halloween character like it or something? If you want to come dressed up like that, feel free. Um, and then today we worked on recognizing teacher and students of the month, which we're making videos and we have a bulletin board for them to be recognized for their hard work and just their responsibilities around South. And then finally, we are working on welcoming freshmen next semester because we would, we like to value our freshmen, um, opinions and make sure that they feel like they're heard at South. Because I feel like a lot of times they kind of feel like they're swept under the rug and we don't want them to feel that way. So, yeah. Any questions?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
You know, I had a question.
Yes. I support.
Yes. So I'll be meeting with you guys tomorrow and I'll be meeting.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yes. So, um, I had a huge question for you guys. The, the football game in Raytown. Um, how well did that event go for you guys and what would you guys like to see differently happen in your community?
Um, from the South's perspective, it definitely was how it was set up was good for us. We were separated in a way that we needed to be separated and I feel like that, um, was well. On the spirit, school spirit side, it went great for us. It's South for life. Um, um, great day to be a Cardinal that day, but, um, it was set up well. We had concessions. I understand some parents may have been less than happy, which is okay. Not all the time. You're not gonna impress everybody. But it did what it needed to do and I support that.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say to these young people, you hear the little bitty every now and then things that go wrong. Everybody needs to hear four hundred kids going to a prom and, and all two hundred and some, at Spirit, uh, I, I commend Raytown for having the vast majority of positive things. So I, I congratulate them, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you guys so much. And I want to say thank you to both principals. You guys are doing a tremendous job, but I know it's, it's like sometimes don't be stated. So I want to say, I'm, I'm, you know, hats off to you guys for the job that you're doing. So thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. And make sure y'all give the, those, these two girls the money you all. That was a joke. So we got that on record. Presentations and recognitions.
Good evening, President Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening, we are recognizing our challenged students who won Battle of the Brains. And a couple of weeks ago, we had the pleasure of going, they had the pleasure of going to the unveiling of the Riveting Robots exhibit at Union Station where they got to see their ideas come to life in a place where people across the metropolitan area and across the, uh, all the states can come and see the work that they've done. So we have a video, um, that shows us how far they've come to get to that exhibit.
I'm Felicia Storm and I teach gifted education here at Raytown. Um, the Battle of the Brains winners, the grand opening is today and these kids worked super hard. Um, they first spent nine weeks to, um, create a proposal for an exhibit at Science City. After they worked all that time, that was in two thousand one, two thousand twenty-two. Then last year, they went on several meetings with, uh, Burns and McDonnell to create their exhibit. They met with, uh, graphic designers, architects, um, engineers, and then construction workers to create their exhibit so that it looked perfect. They got input, they got to talk to professionals, and they got to tour the, um, construction area. These kids are a ray of hope because they involve the community and the schools. They went out to communities to get them to vote for their idea and to get them involved in their idea. They also reached out to classrooms. Teachers involved students that weren't in the gifted education program, but they supported the kids in the gifted education program. So that's why I think that they are a ray of hope.
I am Megan Finlay. I am a challenge teacher here in Raytown. And, um, we are working with the team with Battle of the Brains. We, um, the team that we have is the name Riveting Robots and they started off this project working very hard, writing up a proposal. It was a four-page proposal. Um, as they went through, they designed what activities would be in this project. They designed what they would look like, how they connected with STEM, and they also came up with a budget and how it would be safe. And they even got to go down to Science City and see the construction in action as well. These students have been a ray of hope by really being an inspiration through becoming engineers themselves and coming up with this idea that not only is something that the Raytown community can take advantage of, but the entire Kansas City area.
My name is Charles Afonso Neywar. I'm from South Middle School. You know, my mom always told me hard work pays off. So we worked hard on it and I'm very excited to see.
I'm Eliza Murphy and I go to Raytown Central Middle. It's been exciting because uh, out of so many people I, we got picked and kind of looking forward to building the robots. Because there are little robot keeps that you get to build with and I'm excited for that because I've done it before.
Hi, my name is William Garcia and I go to Raytown Middle School. At first, um, it was kind of nervous thing. I didn't know if I was gonna make it, but now we're very excited that I could be displayed on. I'm most looking forward to unveiling it and I feel very good that I have done something in my life.
My name is Dawn Williams and I go to Central Middle School. I'm looking for, like, my exhibit pretty much. Just want to see how it works because like, I worked on something and now for people to be able to actually play it feels amazing.
And we have some of our students here with us. They're now middle school. But we are gonna ask them to come up and I believe that one of their teachers may be here as well, if you'll come join us up.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say, you kids and families, teachers, parents, everybody, this has been going on for a long time. You guys have been working on this for a couple of years and we've seen all these victories and stuff. But this truly is, as a group, probably one of the greatest things that has ever happened in our district. It's really mind-boggling when you think about it. And, you know, we were talking about, some people mentioned, you know, sometimes we talk about the negative things, but then we hear the positive things. And when, when I hear some people say some negative stuff about our kids or, or our district or something, I just say, oh yeah, watch this video. And then in times where a lot of districts are cutting or eliminating their challenge programs, I'm glad that we're looking for ways to expand ours, to get more kids in the program to do great things like this. So thank you guys and looking forward to more great things from you.
Mr. President.
We are going to acknowledge our principals for National Principal Club. I'm gonna ask that board, that, and their principals.
So as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, I'm just so proud to work with individuals who don't settle for no, who persevere, who are creative, who are innovative, who are resilient, but more importantly, love our children. And although National Appreciation Month for principals comes once a year, the work that they do, they need to be committed each and every day. So I'd like to just present you on behalf of the board a certificate of recognition. So if you would be so kind as to go around the dais as I call your name, uh, Principal of West Ridge Elementary, Ms. Julie. Principal of Free Trail, Ms. Tara Baker. Principal of Southwood, Ms. Claire Quinn. Principal of Spring Valley Elementary, Ms. Melissa Geller. Principal of Spring Valley Elementary, Ms. Melissa Geller. Principal of Robinson Elementary, Ms. Jamie Washington. For RSA, Dr. Brad Trace. For Raytown South Middle School, Ms. Tony Davis. Principal of Raytown South High School, Mr. Shunton Hammond. Principal of Raytown Middle School, Ms. Kimberly Alonso. Principal of Raytown High School, the Dr. Andrew McCarthy. Principal of Raytown Central, Ms. Lori Boyd. Principal of Northwood School, Ms. Mary Beth Sprecher. Principal of North Fleet Elementary, Ms. Lori Kane. Principal of New Trails Elementary or Early Learning Center, Ms. Donna Denny. Of Little Blue Elementary, Doc. Dr. Julie Schmitley. Principal of Laurel Hills Elementary, Dr. Dick, uh Dr. Rebecca B. Principal of London Career Center, Dr. Cheryl Riker. For Fleet Ridge Elementary, Ms. Melissa Glassco. Principal of Eastwood Hills, I mean, Dr. Amanda Coleman. Principal of Blue Ridge Element- Elementary, who just gave me a look, Ms. Kristen Phillips. And while all of our principals aren't present, I still call their names and I just wanna again publicly say thank you for being the leaders you are. Appreciate you. I'm sorry, I can't let this, now you all know that doesn't even look right. To laugh, to laugh. A little too erratic, too erratic. Bless you, baby.
All right, next we'll enter our public comment period, but we have no one signed up tonight, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. Next we have our board uh committee reports. I'll just call them out one by one, say no report if there is none. Uh, finance committee.
Mr. President, I'll just give a brief, brief report, we met this evening. Um, just uh few months into the year, we're starting off well, revenues are exceeding expectations, expenditures are lower than expected, so that's good. We had a safety grant come in from the state that we applied for, for three hundred thousand dollars. So that's new, new funds coming into us, so we'll be looking for ways to spend that money. Uh, we possibly having significant grants uh going towards some HVAC uh systems. So looking forward to that possibly coming to fruition. And then we'll later on the meeting, we'll have a just a formal uh normal vote on the annual secretary of the board report, our submission of our budget to the state.
All right, thank you. Next we have the policy review committee.
Mr. President, the policy committee meets tonight after this meeting, so we'll have a report at our next meeting.
Next we have the capital improvements committee, uh we did hear a report from Josh Husted tonight. Uh, and we will meet uh prior to the next meeting and have a report. Not just on the bond projects, but just all capital improvements that's being done by the the district. Next we'll have the uh community engagement committee.
Uh, we had the first community engagement committee, committee meeting to- tonight and it went very well. We had our first brainstorming meeting and went well, uh we will be talking about dual credit uh with Ms. Meebain, uh we talking about um, we talked about getting the kids dual credits. And then we'll be talking more about uh starting a youth program in the community. And we'll be putting another committee together for that, so we'll be uh talking about having another session. Our next meeting will be twelve eleven twenty-three, but we're talking about moving one up probably to eleven fifteen. So we'll be putting that out soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, next we have uh the report for curriculum, the professional development committee.
Um, no report at this time, we're just continuing to work on our strategic plan and we'll have meetings in the next few months.
Right. And the safety committee. No report there. Citizens Advisory Committee update.
We met as the citizens advisory committee a few weeks ago. We set the charge uh for this school year moving forward, uh engaging our uh citizens in the work that's surrounding our strategic plan. But what I would like to do most and foremost is to make sure that we have uh more parents participating on the citizens advisory committee. Um, we have a few, but I would like some more, um because this is where we would vet ideas and concepts uh and engage our community in the work that's happening in our district. Um, so that will be the conclusion of the report for the citizens advisory committee.
Okay, thank you for the committee reports. And uh we'll move on to our next agenda item. Is there a motion? Minutes.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Motion passed. Entertained a motion on the policy uh review.
All right, Mr. President, I move that the board approved policies GBCA, Staff Conflict of Interests, AC, Prohibition Against Illegal Discrimination, Harassment and Retaliation, EF Food Service Management, and BBBA, Board Member Qualifications.
Motion made in seconded.
Mr. President. So do the policy committee meet and discuss these?
This is the, is this the first read?
Well, yes. No, last time was first read.
They were sent to str- first read change, as change in law.
Throw these sent straight to a summer, so a policy committee is not meeting on these because these are mandated by state law?
Yes.
Okay. And we're still using MSBA for our policy service?
Yes. Next we have uh selection of a technology recycling and salvage service provider. Uh, is there a most?
Well, Mr. President, I move the board approve MRC recycling as the new salvage service provider for the school district at the attached pricing sheets for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school years.
Motion made in second.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh Mr. Vice President, Dr. Martin Knox, members of the board. I'm here to talk briefly about this uh RFP that we released and that of course awarded to the recycling company uh as part of a rotation. Obviously, we're buying new equipment, which means we will be getting rid of old equipment at some point. Uh, we did have a provider that uh we for many years was Senetic, but recently um it's turned out that we have no longer been profitable to them. And so they were gonna start to charge us a pretty hefty sum for pickups. And in lieu of just kind of submitting to those uh those pricing, we decided we'd release an RFP. But when we released it, we actually had a couple of uh criteria on it that were important to us when we scored it. Obviously, we wanted to watch cost, but there were a couple of other things where we wanted to make sure that whoever picked up our equipment was certi- certified to pick it up, to salvage it properly and also really delete any Raytown data that was on any of that equipment. Um, a couple of other things is we did want to make sure that uh any company that did business with us was also gonna be environmentally responsible with that old equipment. Um, I'll get on my green soapbox for a second, but we're gonna find out kind of the toll that Chromebooks have on our environment at some point. And this is, we wanted to make sure that the Raytown di- the school district was a little ahead of that. Um, fa- finally, um when we're doing this, we've still planned to use every bit out of our computers as possible so that when we are surrendering, surrendering our equipment to salvage, that is effectively z- of zero dollar value. Okay, but like I said, um what what we did was is when we picked this, you'll notice I asked for three years of this service. I wanted to make sure that we had very predictable pricing for the next three years. Okay, are there any questions I could answer? It was gonna be about fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand dollars a pickup and they were gonna very specifically uh charge us per Chromebook and per laptop. And so um it was gonna get quite pricey.
I was just curious, do you, what do they do with the, at the salvage, what did, how do they destroy their the Chromebooks and laptops and etcetera?
Yeah, and I think each one has a slightly different process. I don't know all the details, but one of the first things they're gonna do is they're going to try and erase any data off of it. And so I know some of them have like kind of sophisticated magnetic uh processes. And then others, when those don't work, and that's where we would actually still get billed, is they have these large shredding machines that will actually uh kind of more or less destroy the equipment. On some of the, on some of it, they're really, but they're really trying to get some of that harmful heavy metal out of the products that doesn't go into a landfill and some of those rare valuable earth metals out of it as well.
And then uh they probably sell it or reuse it or something like that?
There is the potential that they could resell um our equipment. Like I said, we had that agreement with Senetic, but Senetic, it turned out when we were giving them equipment, there wasn't, there was virtually zero resale value out of it. And and that's, that's a testament to this district. We really do try and use every bit of those computers that we can.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Mr. President. I move the board through the annual secretary of the board report as presented.
Motion made in seconded. And now they're wanting on the. Good evening, good evening, board, uh president, vice president, other members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox. Uh, what you're uh looking at right now is the culmination of of all of the uh transactions and the, you know, the final report uh for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And I'm pleased to report that that we've successfully closed the year um supporting students, staff, programs uh within budget. Uh, and and that's very important. Um, it it demonstrates um how well we are managing the funds, uh achieving the goals that we've set before us and making sure that that uh we do so uh within the means that we've been provided. Um, this uh, this particular version here should be close to final. And then next month, uh you'll be hearing from the auditors. Uh, they have come to do the majority of their work and they're wrapping that up. And so um they'll come and present uh their findings, if if any, um hopefully none. And then um they will, we will finally submit this uh as as a uh as an official final version to the state. I also, uh before we get into questions, I wanted to just take an opportunity and thank the staff. Um, there are folks behind the scenes who manage our payroll, who process all of our checks. And um they do a very good job, they do, they do an outstanding job. And I wanted to just give them uh a shout and commend them for the work that they do. Any questions? Thank you. No questions, thank you. Eric, nobody wanted to mess with you tonight cuz you said you had receipts.
That's funny.
Next we have uh information on our uh human resources department strategic work. You can't hear?
Good evening, Mr. President, uh members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox. Um, I've been talking a little while for um to to the board about presenting um just different snapshots of of components of human resources that I think are important, uh that are good for the board, I think good for our public, good for our community to know. So we'll continue to populate these data points um that I think are very relevant to the, to human resources, to our staff and our community. Um, just another look um through the lens of human resources with regard to quality work live, with regard to our clinic and utilization, etcetera. So any questions about any of that? Okay.
Thank you. Next we have the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, and before we, I'd like to read our donations uh that were made this month. Uh, we have a donation. We have a donation of a gift basket worth $50 from Cynthia Wesley to Robinson Elementary School. We have a donation of $150 from Yale Abu Halko and Becky Bosley to Raytown High School. We have a donation of $2,000 from Yale Abu Halko and Becky Bosley to Raytown High School Theater Department. We have a donation of school supplies worth $200 from the Ridge A Community Church to Northfleet Elementary. We have a donation of custard worth $260 from Cal Luciano at Andy's. Frozen Custard in Lee Summit to Northwood School.
Nice.
I'm sure Rick is very thankful for that. We have a donation of $75 from Vicky Tru to Raytown School District. We have a donation from Voila Viola 16-inch from Jill Heisen to Raytown High School. I'd like to thank everybody who made the donations, and we greatly appreciate it. And, and I'm sure that we will put all of this to good use. Thank you very much. Is the custard still there? I raised it, custard.
All right, Mr. President, I move that the Board adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at 7:36 PM.
Motion made and seconded.